Everybody get it. Everybody will get it. I'm sorry Bud, did you have something to say?
I just want to make sure you can hear me on this phone. The battery of my other phone died and I had to trade phones.
He had to get on his other phone.
Okay. You good now Bud or not?
Yeah, can you hear me good?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you good. Did you want to make any comments before we reconvene?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, relative to the Lambs Creek project?
Yes.
As for the purpose of moving forward and the consideration of a potential joint project should be paid for through grants, state or federal funds, then my thoughts on the project would be totally different. But Mr. Papas's comments were right, words matter. And tonight when this comes up, what we will be voting for is the letter, and the next to the last paragraph of the letter says, "For those who may or may not have read, for the purpose of moving forward with the consideration of this potential joint project, the City Council at its March 28, 2022 meeting, that day where I've been changed, expressed its preliminary support for the original project scope as presented in Mrs. Drake's memorandum of January 26, 2015, to be funded through a special service tax overlay district. Council concurs with the special tax participation threshold of at least 80% of the identified special district property owners expressing support for the inclusion of their property in the special tax district as a condition for this project moving forward. That means without knowing what the cost is, we're agreeing to move the project forward and potentially require 20% of the people in that district, whether they want it or not, to pay special taxes. When it comes time to vote, I cannot agree with that part of this letter. Thank you."
Okay Bud, are you hearing us well?
Yes.
Okay. Alright Buddy, I'm sorry you had a motion we didn't miss. Was there a second?
Second.
Is that a dog? What is that?
No, that's probably feedback because as you know, there's about a 20 second delay.
Okay.
So if Councilman Southall has a television on, you're probably hearing that feedback.
Okay, okay. He's watching a dog show.
Probably watching this.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and the motion's been second. Ms. Kim, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Bud?
Remember, he's gotta do it.
Is this for the Lambs Creek project letter?
This is it. This is the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, yep. Yeah.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. We have a public hearing on our agenda. It has to do with receipt of bids for the sale of publicly owned property located on Pecoson Avenue. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the- Council, you'll recall from your last meeting, you authorized us beginning this process. The piece of property in question, if you are going towards and past the middle school, it is a couple of properties past the second middle school entrance. It is a vacant piece of property owned by the city. Council authorized us to move forward to advertise for public hearing and advertise to receive sealed bids for this property. At this time, well, at the conclusion of this, if you would open the public hearing, then the city clerk will open and read aloud any sealed bids that we have received. Following that, any person in the audience, including but not limited to those persons putting forward a bid, have an opportunity to speak based on past practice, and I think good practice, at the conclusion of the public hearing, it has been this council's tradition to wait a minimum of two weeks before formally considering an offer. And if, if that explanation is sufficient, I would respectfully ask that you open the public hearing.
I think that is more sufficient, Mr. Wheeler. We will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in our audience who would like to address this issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time.
We should start with the clerk.
With the clerk.
One sealed bid, is that correct, Kim?
Correct.
Alright.
We at Extreme Builders would like to submit an offer to purchase the city-owned property, the parcel that we are interested in. Purchasing is located at 1013 Pecoson Avenue, parcel 20-1-36. Our offer, offer to the city of Pecoson is, and as is, where is cash offer of $75,000. If there are any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And the public hearing is open, so if we have anyone in our audience who would like to address that issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you. So you now will close the public hearing?
I respectfully suggest that you table this matter for two weeks, sir.
Alright, looking for a motion?
Move, will you table this matter for two weeks?
Okay, I'll second that. Alright, we have a motion made, a second, we'll table the issue. Any concerns or comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
I'd like to make a correction if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you table it, it takes a motion to bring it back, so you postpone it for two weeks.
If you want to change to postpone, uh-
Uh, yes.
Okay, and Keith?
Agreed.
Okay, alright. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Alright, thank you, Kim.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If you table a motion to a specific date, does that require a motion to bring it back?
I think that you always have a motion to bring it back when you table it. I believe the better course of action is-
Even if you table it for a specific timeframe?
I think the better thing to do is postpone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to old business, consideration of a draft letter to York County pertaining to the proposed Lambs Creek dredging project. Bud, we had a, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
We, we, we had about a 10-minute recess and we did have some discussions amongst council. So since you weren't here and we're not part of it, please pay close attention to the, to the mo-, to the motion.
Okay.
Okay? Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As I sit here trying to digest everything that, that we have shared tonight, with all due respect and consideration to everything that was said and everybody that was here tonight, I'm, I'm grateful that we live in a country to where we can engage in such civil discourse. That being said, a couple of comments I heard tonight, I, I feel like I cannot let sit because of my care, concern and respect for city staff. I, I heard a previous city engineer being described as incapable, and I feel like I need to comment directly on that. I never cease to be impressed with the city staff. They're highly professional. I think they do a wonderful job for us. So as a, as an elected official, I, I felt compelled to, to clarify that. I also heard the city administration described as a bureaucracy. I could not disagree more. I never, I never underestimate the capabilities of these fine folks. There's no way we can show enough gratitude and appreciation for what they do. We have a very lean, efficient and highly professional staff, and they are by no means a bureaucracy. So, thank you. With regard to the motion on sending the letter, out of respect, as I said, and consideration for everything that was said tonight, my motion will be in support of my position all along. But as I expressed earlier, and I'll, I'll stand by my words from earlier, but I am absolutely not so arrogant to believe that I know it all, not even close. There are those here tonight far more knowledgeable than I am on the subject of dredging. So that being said, I move to not send the letter to York County, but commit the city to further researching the ideas that were presented tonight.
Alright, thank you, David.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Are there any comments, any questions? Bud, did you hear it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Is York County expecting a response to us? Is that why we were sending the letter? They were expecting a response from us?
We had, we had talked early on about three different steps. When we talked about the three steps, which the third step would have directed a letter when we got there to the folks that live on Lambs Creek, these people and others, that was in, that was in step three. Originally, we had three steps that we wanted to do. Counsel wasn't real happy with the three steps. So we just kinda said, well, okay, what do we want to do? Do we want to send this letter or do we not want to send this letter? And as far as I'm concerned, I got, you know, I got, I think as, as close as I can remember anyway, that most of this council was not in favor of sending the letter. However, I think what David has, has done has answered the question of the folks that are here tonight, number one. And I don't know that we need to move any further away from that. So what will happen is we will, if this, if it passes this council, this, this motion, we will absolutely get involved in some of these areas that have been mentioned to us tonight and see where it takes us. And I think that would, I think that answers everybody's question here tonight.
I guess my question is, this letter is to Sheila Knoll, who is York County Board of Supervisors.
That's right.
Was this letter because she requested a response from us?
Yes, she wanted a response, a response from us, and then they would, York County, would have their own work session with no given time, and then respond back to us. Hopefully, when they respond back to us, then we can move on to step number two. And, and at the end of the day, we'd finally reach step number three, which would be sending our folks a letter, doing our own survey. The last survey that I'm aware of is 2015. There were no's, there were maybes, there were yeses, and there were a bunch of non-applicable. I don't even know what that means. And I did talk to the gentleman, if he's here tonight or not, from York County, lives on the other side of the creek. He, was he cheating, sir? They did, actually did the survey. And I, you and I had a conversation just, just the other day. Yeah, Friday. So what, what I think David's doing with his motion is saying, okay, we're not going to send the letter, but we are going to, it doesn't mean in the future we don't send the letter, maybe we will. I think, I think what we're gonna need to do tonight is, I've, I've learned some things, I'm sure all of us have, that I wasn't aware of. And I think we need to take them in consideration, and I think David's motion does that.
I agree with that, but then my, here's my concern. My concern is, yes, I think we need to investigate. I think there was a lot of information in it tonight that was really good. But we owe a response to York County. So is there a plan as part of this research or task force or whatever it is we're gonna do? Because it seems very vague what we're committing to do. I'm not clear on what we're committing to do, other than-
I don't think-
We're gonna investigate this. Will there be a response to York County at some point?
I would, I would say at some point, yes.
That's just what-
Yeah, I would say-
I feel like if we, if we clearly owe them a response, then at some point, maybe after we gather all this information,
We, York County, York County-
Need to respond to them.
York County will be notified, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one thing. I agree with David's motion. They, I don't think it should be sent, especially as it's written. I do have a few little changes that I wanted to see in it, but if we're gonna talk about it more, which we are, I'll let that go. There were two questions, two things that came up tonight that are, are, I won't say it concerned me, but something that I hadn't reckoned with was talking about falling in the mud, not could be able to get out. And the question that I asked myself was, will the dredging rid the creek of the silt, sediment and mud? And will the dredging fix the hazard of falling in that mud? I don't know if that will, but it's something I'm gonna look into.
Okay. Alright, any other questions, any other comments? Let me just make one more comment. Davis, your comments were greatly appreciated, and, and the next staff knows exactly how all of us feel regarding what they do for us every day and do for this community. There was one comment that talked about us leaving a legacy, and I think it was directed to each and every one of us. I would just like to say, I'm not concerned about the legacy that I leave here when I'm gone. If I haven't done it over the last 45 years, or however long I've, I've been doing this, then there won't be a legacy of Gordon Hassel. But I'm, I am quite satisfied with my performance on this city council and any other organization I've been involved in as long as I've lived here. So just want to make that comment. Okay.
Can I make one more comment? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Carrie told me last meeting I'm allowed to talk, so I'm taking him upon that.
You are, please.
I just want to thank everybody here that came out today. I think it's amazing when people really care about an issue. I've been on your side on a different issue before. I think when a group of people really care about something, that they can make change. I believe that. I've seen it here with several issues. I hope as a council that our action tonight will not, that this issue will not die, because I think you have clearly said that it's important. I think it's important for us as a council to do our own survey and find out how many of our citizens this is important to. I think you guys were all very respectful when you spoke to us, and I heard every word that you said, and I appreciate all of it. And I hope that this council will do what we're saying we're gonna do tonight, which is investigate this issue and poll our citizens and find out how our citizens feel about this, and maybe get some of you guys who are smarter, who would be willing to set up a task force and look into grant money and figure out if our citizens are interested in a tax district. Because I do think that this project could be a model for the same problem that will come up in other creeks. And it doesn't obligate us to do that, but if we figure it out here, like somebody who was very smart said, Hampton has figured out this problem. They've had these problems. They've figured it out. I think if this is a model and we can somehow get it to work without it being a financial burden on the city or the taxpayers, we can use that for models for other people who say, I want my creek dredged, and we can say, well, these citizens were willing to pay for it, and this is how we made it happen. Because I do think it's gonna be an issue that Pecoson is gonna have to deal with, not with just Lambs Creek, but in the future. So you guys need to hold us to task, and if it's something you care about and it doesn't move forward and you don't see action happening, you can email Kim to email us and follow up on it, and I would encourage you, if it's important to you, that you do that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say this to council directives, but since we got the audience now, go ahead and say it. We don't have, we have one tax rate in Pecoson that applies to all the property in Pecoson. We don't have special tax for waterfront or non-waterfront or wetlands or farmland. We just have one tax rate, and I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
We do.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other questions, any other comments, Bud?
Yeah, yeah, Gordon. First, I'd like to second Janet's comments. I'd like to thank everyone who attended the meeting tonight and those at home for paying attention to their government. The views expressed, pros and cons, they are important to all of us to make a decision. I'd also like to second David Hudson's comments about the city staff. The city staff at Pecoson is second to none. They are first-class people. They work very hard, okay? The entire city staff, including Randy sitting right there, okay, and, and everybody else, okay? This is a hard-working city, and the, the city does the best it could and can, and it's, it's better than any city that I'm aware of.
Alright, thank you, Bud.
Call a question.
We're ready. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Let's move on to new business, first item. By the way, if you want to stay, you're welcome, but if you'd like to leave now, and somehow I think you're probably ready to go.
Well, sure. So they pay more for being on the water? Well, but their point is, it's more valuable because it's on the water, but there's no water. You're welcome.
Sir? Oh, oh.
Well, I do think the letter needs to be, I do think the letter needs to be revised. I do think the letter needs to be revised. I followed you very, I followed you at the same.
Sir? Okay, I'm sure. Yes, sir? Okay. Just a second till they, through their conversation. Okay. We'll hear from my city manager about a recommended budget for fiscal year FY223. Fiscal year and FY mean the same thing.
I'm gonna work with the lapel mic a little bit, so if I'm turning my head, people can still hear me. Thank you for the opportunity to, to share this budget recommendation with you. We do that about this time each year in conformance with the city code, which sets out the process, which says that the manager will present a budget to council between the 1st and 15th of April. Council has 45 days from the day that it's officially presented to you, which would be today, to take action. And towards the end of the presentation, we'll talk about some of the planned discussion times, noting that the council can, can always decide to add additional meetings or special meetings along, along the way. I have the, the chore of summarizing 273 pages in a 12-page PowerPoint slide and the challenge of not reading it to you. So, so I'm gonna try to, to not do that. As council is aware, each year as we begin the budget process, we start first with a review of the current budget, both where we are in terms of expenditures, unanticipated challenges, also a review of our revenues to see sort of our overall fiscal health, both long-term, which each year is a part, and also short-term. I'm, I'm glad to share with you that, that our financial position, despite everything that we and that, that all the other local governments in our area have gone through in the last couple of years, our position remains strong, our overall financial position. And as council is aware, from our periodic expenditure and revenue reports, we are expecting a small positive contribution to the general fund, fund balance at the end of the year. Preparing a budget is never easy. There are many variables. We have to project not only what we think will happen between now and the 1st of July, but we have to continue that projection all the way through to, to January the 30th of the following year. We are challenged, as, as council is aware, in having to prepare a budget at a time of the highest inflation that we've seen in 40 years. Gas prices, when we wrote this, were over $4. Today, I paid $3.99. Maybe that's a good sign, I don't know. As council is aware, the Federal Reserve has begun a series of interest rate increases. They've done one. They're talking about several more. We have a major European war. We hear folks on television and publications talk about the possibility of a double dip recession. And if that wasn't enough, the General Assembly has still not completed work on its budget. And as you'll recall, that is an important part of our overall budget, as well as the schools. And we've all seen an increase in public and private sector challenges in recruitment and retention. We have, I won't say been immune for that, because we certainly haven't here, but we are, we are experiencing the same kinds of challenges as our neighbors. We are not immune to it. And, and as one of you said just a few minutes ago, we're a very small staff, so when we begin to lose several people in a department, that's a real challenge for us. And council is also aware, for example, the length of time it took us to, to successfully bring on a new finance director. It's taking longer, and, and in terms of retention, some of both private and public sector other entities are, are enticing some of our people away, and they're harder, they're harder to, to bring on their replacement. So those are things that make the preparation of this budget even more challenging than, than traditionally. As council is aware, and we've used these budget guiding principles for the last several years, and they're really a byproduct of our work together over the last 13. We note somehow that this- We note somehow that this is the 13th budget I've had the pleasure of presenting in the city of Pecosin. So we always start with the desire to keep our property tax rates, both real estate and personal property, stable, if at all possible. And this budget does that. In addition, as council will recall, at your last meeting, you took action to actually reduce the personal property ratio from 100% of value to 90% of value for this tax year, which again is both the June collection, which affects this fiscal year, and the December collection, which will be in the upcoming fiscal year. There is tremendous volatility in the personal property values. We may well find ourselves, like we did this year, with some version of escalated values next year as well, next calendar year, at which point we'll come back to you and talk about whether or not the overall budget is in a position that we can do something perhaps similar to this, or maybe a different way to accomplish the same objective. We have, over the course of my time here, really focused on doing the things that we have traditionally done well at the service levels that we have traditionally done, rather than focusing on adding programs or substantially increasing service levels. It's very seldom do we have that type of available revenue. This year is no different for many of the reasons that I'd outlined before. As always, the council's adopted financial guidelines are the central pillars upon which we build our financial plan. That is no different than is always the case. Here's one, which I've spoken to it a little bit, but I'll sort of close it up from the other direction. We've given you our best recommendations based on our revenue and expense projections through March of 2022, with things like recessions and things like the General Assembly not completing their budget, all in front of us. And as the council knows, we will, as city staff, carefully monitor our fiscal condition. And should there be a need to take action, as this council has in the past, to make sure that our ship remains righted and that our financial position remains strong, we'll be back to you with recommendations and options, as we have, as we did, as we approached the beginning of the public health emergency and at other times during my tenure here. We traditionally try to limit new initiatives, in part because we have, we don't have a very robust new revenue growth from which to add things, but we do focus instead of making sure that with the budget, that we can continue to do the things we are doing without starving ourselves to do them. Meaning, we sometimes need to increase slightly or even moderately some of our expenditures to continue to do what we've been doing. And that's the focus here. In terms of the general funds, the available additional funds beyond what are needed for the base budget are focused, and I'll talk about it in a minute, really on compensation increases for city staff, but also school employees as well. As council is also aware, after we moved from the guiding principles, we have a series of strategic focus areas. These were developed over time with input from budget work sessions, from budget retreats and other things with the city council. And I would say right up front that the number, whether it's one, two, three, or four, or five, is not necessarily indicative of its ranking, because they're all important, but you've got to call one, one. So we start with public education. There are two or three things to bring to your attention here. First, the budget as recommended fully funds the superintendent and school board's requested budget of us. One thing that is different is, as the school board was working on its budgets with the superintendent, is when the, we really saw the acceleration in inflation. So what this budget recommendation does is, not only does it fully fund the school's recommendation for a 5% compensation increase for their employees, but actually adds money equivalent to an additional percent. And with inflation projected to be 6% to 8% for the 12-month period beginning, it was February on, this is not an outlier in terms of percentage. Additionally, as council is aware, this community receives significant federal monies through the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. And the recommendation is to use some of our, we have, as council will recall, we have sort of discretionary, we have flexible money and not flexible money. And the not flexible money has a series of requirements that must be met, and things like HVAC system upgrades to promote healthy buildings is something that qualifies. And so you'll see on page 245, 246 of the budget, there is a recommendation, which is almost $2 million, to assist the school system in their planned HVAC system upgrade project for the primary school. So two significant priorities in the budget, and they're both here, compensation for school employees and investment in primary school, whose HVAC system has, to the extent that it was ever put in, has very much run its useful life. Strategic focus area two. The first of the two, and again, all these numbers don't necessarily can also translate to order, but the first, as council is aware, is a budgetary recommendation. It is in two places in the budget. It is a combination, it is proposed to be a combination of two funding sources. One, the significant majority, over 90% majority, of our flexible federal ARPA money, and also about $3.6 million in debt fund for a total project budget for the public safety building of $12.8 million. A couple of points about that. Council will recall, at the request of city council about three years ago, following its inclusion in the comprehensive plan, that the city look at a consolidated public safety building for police, fire, admin, and emergency operations center. We went about it in your direction in doing a space needs analysis feasibility study, which was presented to council approximately two years ago. With the increase of the federal money, this project became something that might be possible without having to raise taxes to pay the additional debt. And the debt that is suggested here is a small enough amount that it would not in itself trigger a tax rate increase. But, so what we've got here is the recommendation, again, from those two funding sources, to move forward with this building. Secondly, and this one, it doesn't require a caveat, but it's a placeholder for, it needs to be added on to something else. This budget also recommends a special pay adjustment. I'll talk about general pay adjustment in a couple of minutes. The special pay adjustment would be for all sworn public safety personnel in recognition of how quickly the market for police, fire, EMS is changing in Hampton Roads and in our area as well. So there will be a recommendation later for a general compensation increase. And so to use this budget, it's for public safety folks, it's both. It's not one or the other, it's designed to be both. Particularly, and you've read about it, I'm sure, in the newspapers lately, communities in our area, the most notable one, the one that I saw the statistics on just recently was the city of Norfolk, not that we are in Norfolk, but we are in the same region. I have 279 police vacancies, if I remember the newspaper story from last week correctly. There is a heck of a lot of competition for police officers, and that also translates, again, to fire and EMS. So my suggestion here, my recommendation, is that in addition to general pay adjustment, that for public safety officers, we add an additional 1,000. Second, excuse me, third, quality of life. At a time where we don't have always ongoing additional money to get beyond those base things, plus taking care of our employees and school employees, we don't often put these types of things specifically in an adopted budget. We look throughout the year, and sometimes with your consent and authorization, we are able to make limited investments from either our fund balance, our debt fund, even our current year operating budget, depending upon the periodic revenue and expenditure reviews. And so I just wanted to point out, while there's nothing specific in the budget in the last year going through to the end of this calendar year, there are just a number of things that I think the public would be interested to be reminded of. First, again, kind of in no order, but first was the significant investment city council made this past summer with the acquisition of new park property off of Kessler Drive. In the last year, the council has also made investments in permanent restroom facilities at South Lawson Park, completed the sidewalk connector projects between our two school complexes. We have, you have, approved money to do some badly needed renovation and repair at our pool. And as well as making some smaller investments, we have, we have done two micro parks, actually three micro parks in the last year, and the next one is planned for in front of Wendy's. We hope to get that done sometime in the next few months. And as council will recall, because you approved this, we replaced, we removed the unsafe bleachers that were messic and the process of putting in new ones with your support. Four, I've talked a little bit about this, and Councilman Hucks spoke to it as well, as well several of you with regard to the previous discussion. We, I believe, and I know that you believe as well, that our employees, both schools and here in the city, are really the cornerstone of how we provide government and how we serve the people of this city. And in the face of a projected 6% to 8% annual inflation, and as already indicated, some significant and increasing pressure that we have competing for new employees and also to retain employees, this budget recommends that a general wage increase, that means every full-time employee, that includes public safety, of 5% plus $1,500. That $1,500 is a permanent wage adjustment, not a bonus. And I would note to you that that's very similar to what was recommended in both York County and James City County for their employees. They maybe tweaked a bit as they go through their budget process, but that is very, well, that is essentially exactly what those two localities did, with the one exception of the $1,000 additional for sworn public safety. Now, I'm aware that they may tweak it as they go through the process, but my point in bringing that up to you is just demonstrate, we're not market outliers in this, and there certainly are communities that are doing more than this as well. Lastly, this is always one of our focus areas, which is fiscal stability. We make sure that we don't overextend ourselves. We are careful to not count on one-time revenues to support ongoing expenses. We are mindful of the year costs of things that we may do in the short term. We remain, as always, in compliance with your adopted fiscal management guidelines. And as you'll recall, a couple of years ago, the council made its, I should say final, it's not really final, but it is our final deposit in our revenue fiscal stability fund, which council had established at a rate of up to $1 million. It remains at $1 million. We may at time, over time, want to increase that further, but we remain there and we continue to do everything necessary to maintain our AAA bond rating. Couple of additional things to bring to your attention, and really to the public, fiscal stability during a time of COVID meant additional things. This council made appropriations six, seven months ago to both the Social Services Department and the United Way, both of whom would and are offering COVID-related assistance to our citizens. So we created, we helped to fund those support efforts, as well as appropriated additional funds to our Economic Development Authority to provide business assistance for those businesses that are struggling with the same public health emergencies. So you appropriated significant money, it was federal money coming out of ARPA, but nonetheless, you appropriated significant money for not only to maintain our fiscal position, but hopefully to also assist our citizens and our businesses as well. So in conclusion, it's been a difficult two years. Few of us have any experience with a public health emergency that doesn't seemingly go away, although it seems to be going away, he says with great caution, but it's not gone away yet, and its impacts on our economy, both nationally and here in the city and in our region, continue and continue to change. But we were prepared, not so much for this, but we were prepared. It was one of the lessons that we all learned together coming out of 2008, 2009 recession, was we needed to strengthen our financial position, and we did that. And we took actions, working together, to continue to maintain that strength, even through the challenge. And at this point, we are stronger than we started, and that didn't happen by accident, and that really happened as a result of council leadership, working with staff. So as we look at this budget, as we conclude, there are really a few focuses, it's really on investment. It's focusing on our ability to attract and retain a high-quality workforce, both our own and our school system. And so that's what I call sort of a short-term and continuing investment, as well as making longer-term investments in our community, whether it's the middle school complex and all the things that we have done there and are continuing to do, with the middle school itself, investments in the athletic facilities, et cetera, the public safety building, which again, came through the comprehensive plan, all the way through to council at this point, and the investments in the primary school HVAC system. So we're making both continuing and longer-term investments. Couple more slides and I'll stop talking. Key dates moving forward, as we do each year, even in the COVID years, we did this next thing, although with not everybody in the room, but we do traditionally the joint session with the school board. Typically, following that, we have our own companion work session as a city, and then the public hearing on the budget is the 25th. The scheduled budget adoption is May 9th. That doesn't mean you have to do it by that time, but you do need to do it within 45 days of today. So if there is a need to schedule legitimate work sessions and/or a special session to continue budget deliberations, you know, we stand ready to help in any way we can. Last slide, for those watching at home, if you would like to look at the budget, it's 273 pages, you can find it on our website, right there. There are hard copies available in the library, there are copies available in city manager's office, as well as the finance department's office as well. And though we're not the custodians of the school budget, if anyone would like to see the school budget, there are copies available in the superintendent's office as well. And with that, I will stop talking. Thank you for your time. Thank my, all the department heads and the finance team, as well as the superintendent, for all of their help in getting to this point. And tell you that we look forward to working with you over the next several weeks as you do your budget deliberations. And sort of finally, just to say that should you have questions, staff and I are available to meet with you and to talk about any questions that you may have. If you would start with Lee, and then Tony and I will come in to be part of those conversations as may be helpful. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Randy, thank you very much. Well done. Great presentation. You mentioned several times in your presentation about council. Let me just say this to you and to your team. Let me just say this to you and to your team, Lee and Christie and Kim and Tanya, your department heads as well, you folks are the ones that make this city run. You're the ones that cause us to be recognized on a map. Any meetings that you and I attend, there are always questions about, how in the world do you guys do this? And we do it because of you and your team, our department heads, and certainly all the staff. So, you know, even though you want to give us credit for all the things you said that we've done, it all goes to you guys, certainly deserving of it. Backing up to the COVID process, what a tremendous effort was put on by the city of Pecosa in joining with Hampton. We were probably some of the very first people, and all of our school teachers, all of our employees vaccinated way ahead, way ahead of many other areas that you and I see as we travel around the peninsula. Our schools, you know, were in the process of finishing, I think. Renovation of the middle school certainly looks nothing like it did when I was there, which wasn't yesterday, but it's significant that we talk about. You know, we've got a brand-new school, for all intents and purposes, that I'm not sure the public really knows about, to be honest with you. Not because we haven't put it out there, but there are some things the public just doesn't pay any attention to. But if they were able to watch this presentation, then they see the work that goes on behind the scenes every day to try to make this a better place. And as one gentleman mentioned tonight, it's not about legacy, got nothing to do with legacy. I don't mean any harm towards the gentleman, but I just thought that was a comment out of place. It didn't go over well with me, I don't know about the rest of it. But anyway, you did a good job tonight, Randy.
Thank you.
And you do a good job throughout the year, and I can't believe you made it 13 years. How did that happen?
I don't know. That was one of the questions you all had 13 years ago. You were concerned that I might not stay too long, and now you may be concerned that I've overstayed my welcome. I don't know.
Never.
Not that, no.
Never.
All right. Assuming that there aren't a lot of questions for Randy, are there any other comments from you, sir?
No, sir.
If not, are there council directors, Janet?
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for letting the people speak and not having a time limit on them. I know there's lots of places where, I've been spoken to other boards here, where I was given a time limit, and I think that's very gracious that we give our citizens speak and are willing to stay here and listening to them. I wanted to thank the citizens for coming out to speak. I think it's important, when you care about an issue, that you come and speak to us. I hope as a city council, we meant what we said with David's motion, that we will look into this, that we will gather more information, that we will respond to the York County Board of Supervisors, and that this won't just die, because I think the citizens that came out tonight made very clear that they at least want us to investigate this. They at least want us to gather some information. And I think it's important that we listen to them and that we do just what they asked, which is, can we at least just say some information, can we, you know, on this? So I hope that we do follow through on our motion and that we do that. I didn't, I just want to say that I did not take offense to anything that anybody said. I feel like when people spoke tonight, they talked about bureaucracy or some of the comments they made, I don't think it was meant with ill intent. I didn't take it that way myself personally. I thought they were very respectful. I don't think that they had any intention of criticizing our city staff or us as a council. I think they were very gracious in their words and thanked us multiple times for what we do, and so I wanted to say again how much I appreciated everybody's, all the citizens' words tonight.
Okay, Carrie?
I basically agree with Janet, and also the fact that we don't put people on a time limit, I think is one of the great things about this council, because we're one of the few that doesn't. Some places have a big clock up there, and it's more important to watch the clock than it is to listen to the people that voted for you to put you up here at this table. So I think what we do is just really good.
Okay. Good deal.
Did over what Janet said, and I just appreciate having the workstation where the people can see us talking about what the issues are, that we aren't completely blind, we know what we're talking about, at least as good as we can, and move forward from there.
Okay.
I just, the one thing I disagree that Janet said, I did take offense to what the gentleman said about bureaucracy. I think he did mean that derogatorily, and I was dismayed at it, and I agree with David, and I'm glad he corrected. I think we've got one of the best staffs in the whole wide world, and I hope none of you took it personally, the comments that that gentleman made. So that's it.
Thank you, Bud.
Thank you, Gordon. Just one quick comment. I don't say things I don't mean. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Motion to adjourn? Go move it.
Well, I'm sorry, Bud, I keep forgetting that you're out there, pal.
All right. Thank you, Gordon. First off, if I got out of order any time, I apologize, but the audio cut in and out, and apparently there's a lot that did not come through on the phone. But I second all the positive comments about our city manager and the staff. There are none finer, okay? All the comments that everyone has made are absolutely true about our city staff, and I do appreciate the people who participated in the meeting tonight. I don't know about some of the comments. After the meeting, I'd like either you or Randy to give me a call to tell me about the things I missed. Obviously, I missed something between the audience and visitors and approval of the minutes, and then the sound went away, and I caught the bids, and then after that, it went away, and the next thing I heard was David's comments about the amendment for the consideration of the letter. And so I missed a bunch, but thank you very much, and y'all have a nice night.
Hope you feel better, Bud, and I will call you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Do we have the motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, second to adjourn, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fyge?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel? Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is 7 to 0.